Welcome to another dish of mine it matters here at the decoder and brought to you by shock safe and lock. I'm Jonathan Starr. Today we are interviewing another school board candidate Scott Louser. Thank you for joining us today.
Thanks for having me. I'm looking forward to this for a while.
Absolutely. We've been trying to get on the books. Life is busy, but tell us a little bit about yourself. We know a lot about you because you've been in the public eye a little bit, but, but, but humanize yourself for a moment.
Well, humanizing me starts with being born and raised in Minot. I graduated in Minot High in 1989, but really my interest in school and I'll get, I'll get to a little bit of that in the future, but when I was two years old, my dad started taking me to events at Minot High School. He was announcing, he was a teacher and he was announcing football, basketball and wrestling.
Right.
My sister was born that, that the fall I was two years old and so she'd stay home with my mom. My dad would take me.
Okay.
And that's where my love for Minot High started was as a two-year-old.
Right.
Graduated Minot High in 1989 and went to Minot State. I got two degrees or two concentrations in business at Minot State. And left North Dakota for about a year and a half, moved out to Wisconsin and missed living here.
Okay.
There were some events that happened that I wasn't really a part of in the community. I didn't feel like it was home. I enjoyed living there.
Right.
And I came back and went into business with my dad in real estate.
Okay.
And the second year I was back, a classmate of mine's father from Minot State approached me and said, Hey, you should go get a grad degree. My son's doing it. You should do it. Ended up enrolling again at Minot State. So I, I was a attendee at Minot State for a total of eight years.
Oh, man.
And finished with the master's degree and then got pretty active in the Association of Realtors, which led me ultimately into the legislature. And I've served as the national, the president, the vice president of the National Association of Realtors 12 years ago. And got me pretty active and, and engaged in politics.
Absolutely. And of course, part of we've seen your tours of schools and stuff like that. And I think at one point you mentioned part of the reason that you're inspired by this is your girls and stuff like that. Absolutely.
Yeah. And, and that's when we had our forum at the, the chamber EDC, I said this and I meant it and I displayed it. It starts and ends with my girls. I've got a, a sixth grade girl Cameron. She's at Jim Hill and a third grade daughter Kendall, who's at Edison. I went to those schools myself.
Wow.
And it's pretty special to me. I don't want to leave out my son Garrett, who's a junior at Arizona State. So he graduated Minot High three years ago.
Yeah.
And, and so everything that I'm doing as far as school board really begins and ends with my kids.
Yeah. A lot of family history, of course, that people will know that commonly just by the name, but it is interesting to see the perspective that you guys, you have a very unique perspective on the school system as you've seen it over decades times. Whereas some people may have only seen that a very short, short view.
Yeah.
Have you seen any developments over that time?
Developments in the Minot schools?
Yeah, that, that are anything that have caused you to worry, maybe have built up to the point of needing to take action or?
Well, as a, as a taxpayer and as an elected official, I pay attention to the taxes more than I probably, well, certainly more than when I was a student.
Yeah.
But yeah, the, the budget has me concerned. There's certainly things that can be worked on. I'm not worried about it. I'm not scared about it. I'm worried about it. I'm not scared.
Yeah.
Those things can be addressed. We've done it at the state. We're going to do it locally. The things that I've seen is the, the changes that I've seen is obviously the growth.
Yeah.
The, I've got the, I've got the handbook for the high school classes. I got it yesterday.
Wow.
It's 81 pages.
Wow.
The, the, the type of classes and the, the depth of what we have to offer. You know, I took the classes that were pretty common. I took the math classes, the science. I took some electives, but I wasn't aware probably then, and certainly not like I am now of the variety of classes that are available to our students. It's almost like they're in college.
Wow. And that, that's something that's definitely changed recently. And I think we've probably seen a lot of attention drawn to it with the development of the North Hill High School.
Yeah.
And some of the, the advancements, you know, the CDL program, which may have already been in place and some of the other things that they have going on up there, which is pretty cool. So you're mentioning, and we'll talk budget because that's going to be, that's going to be a good talk, but you're mentioning about a survey that was handed out through the teachers' union.
Yeah.
Is there, was there anything you want to comment on that?
Well, yeah, the, so in 2010 and 2014, as a candidate for the legislature, we received survey questions from the education association. And at that time we followed, they followed up with an interview. And so I got to interview with some of the volunteers in the association for an endorsement.
Okay.
And this time around, my understanding is there's not an endorsement, but they're going to give the survey responses to all of them, all the members of the association. And that was due last Friday and I wanted to verify that it was turned in. So my understanding is all the members have seen the responses. I'm going to start posting those responses.
Okay.
So that the public can see it on my Facebook page and my website.
I'll be exciting then.
It, it could be because the last question was what, what would you like to add? And what I added was my disappointment that there wasn't any questions about the kids and their education.
Okay. Interesting. So, so we have a, what's the purpose of this survey?
Well, I think it's to give a, a perspective to the voting. It's, it's to give the members of the association.
Okay.
Some information before they vote.
Okay.
They're not, as I understand it, directing their members who they would endorse, but it gives a pretty good idea. And if you don't attend a forum or watch a podcast, it, it becomes name recognition.
Yeah.
Which is popularity contest. We don't want that in politics.
We don't at all. So, and so that's interesting. So, so you're trying to make this, there's a survey. You get to fill in the answers as a candidate. Those answers are compiled, whatever. And then they make endorsement or now they don't make an endorsement, but it's given to, to people so that way they can see who they would like to vote for. But in those questions, not one of them pertains to anything to do with kids, even though it's a teachers' union and that should, you would think would be kind of the focal point of what's going on.
Well, I, I don't want to say I was surprised and I understand. I mean, they're, we all want what's best for the kids.
Right.
But when you are a member of an association, they're looking at things like retirement, pay, retention, safety, those types of things. So I understand it. Where my disappointment was, was there wasn't one question out of the 13 or 15, whatever the number was.
Right.
Regarding curriculum or programs, whether it's, it's for kids that need help or it was advancement, advanced placement classes, that sort of thing. There just wasn't a question.
There's nothing interesting. All right. Well, what are your three top issues, concerns, priorities? However, you want to do it for, for the minus school.
Well, sometimes when I'm asked three, I give four.
That's fine.
Or five.
What's your top five?
Well, the, the most important thing is I want to see, I want to see the best educational experience for our kids possible in Minot and we're never going to get to perfection. I want to continue to improve that. A measure of that is going to be increased proficiency scores on testing. Interestingly, when I did my visit to Washington or John Hoven Elementary, the principal took me to the entry of the school and pointed to their proficiency or their, their scores. Every quarter they're, they're testing. And that's the first thing that we talked about. It's the first thing you see when you walk in, the students see it, the teachers see it, the parents. And we did the tour of the building and we ended there too. He said, I want to reiterate, look how we're doing.
Yeah.
With that kind of focus means that, that leadership and that focus is leading to increased scores. The proficiency scores are improving. So that's important to me. That as well as graduation rates. And you know what I'm finding is attendance.
Okay.
In improving the intended attendance rates, that's not a kid problem. That's parents not sending their kids to school.
Yeah.
If they're sick, they're sick. But if they're gone for two weeks.
Right.
We've got an issue.
Yeah.
I want to see that improve. Obviously the budget, I want to get back to what we would call a balanced budget and not deficit spending on expenses. I want to see a smooth transition to Minot North. That's a, that's like my baby because I was, I brought that transaction to the school board.
Yep.
So that's a five-year vision that's coming to fruition this, this next fall. But I want to see that transition smooth with a new superintendent, a new super assistant superintendent and potentially a majority of members on the school board.
Yeah.
So there is plenty that I want to see happen and I, we can joke about this. I want to see every time there's a competition at the state level, the finals, whether it's sports or debate or, or music, that it's Minot North versus Minot High.
All right.
That, that would be an ultimate goal.
So do you think, talk on that, the most important one of those your priorities? Do you think that with the divide, the not, I mean divides typically never work, but with this transition where we can be splitting our, our school classes and stuff like that, that there'll be enough talent to do it?
Oh, absolutely. We've got so much talent here. If, if you're talking academics and activities, I, I'm just stunned. And I'm, I'm going to go off my comfort zone here a little bit. Earlier this week was the choir concert.
Okay.
Never been to anything like that. And I was up at Minot State and the stage is full of, of Minot kids singing.
Okay.
And I can't sing.
Yeah.
I've proven that. I'll not try to prove it ever again, but I, I'm amazed and I, I even did a video on it saying, I don't know why these kids aren't singing the national anthem at the events at the basketball and football games.
All right.
That's the best national anthem I've heard live.
Yeah.
Was Minot High kids singing. Um, you could take half of them and put them at North.
Yeah.
And we'd have the same result.
Right.
We're going to see the same. Our, our teams are this spring. We're dominating in certain sports. I don't think the girls soccer team has given up a goal yet.
Wow.
The softball team is, I believe is undefeated. The, the tennis team, the girls tennis team and we're, we're just, we're stacked. Bismarck made this transition when they opened legacy and they're competitive.
Right there.
West Fargo, West Fargo Cheyenne just won the state boys basketball tournament. There was no Cheyenne when I was in high school.
Yeah.
We'll compete.
We'll compete. Absolutely. So we talked about these kids. What about the teacher base as well that will have to, you believe that we have enough depth there? Obviously. It takes coaches and it takes teachers in order for these things to succeed as well.
Yeah. That was a concern of mine that, that I don't think was really addressed in the school board as we were looking to open a, a new school. We've got a lot of talent. We've got people that want to work in Minot. We've got a, a really good, in my opinion, a really good compensation package. And what I'm seeing is we have a good work environment in, in our school system. People aren't going to come up to me and say, I don't like where I work.
Yeah.
So we're, but you know, some of that's going to exist, but overall I've been very surprised and impressed by the talent pool that we have.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, we're going to have, this educational experience is going to be good for kids K through 12.
That's awesome. So we, we talked about the Minot High, North Hills High School. I butchered that, but that's all right. We just need to relax. Some priorities. Your best educational experience proficiency scores. Now this isn't something that has come up as a concern. Okay. This is something that's a concern right now with the, the candidates for the DPI and stuff like that. It's just like a concern overall in the state right now.
Yep.
How do you feel like Minot's competing in this area? And is there something that needs to change?
Well, the, the focus on, on making that a goal and you know, really if that's what you say, this is important to our school and focus on that. It, it's going to help. There are some things that I don't think are being discussed publicly about our proficiency scores. I was visiting a classroom, a kindergarten classroom where the kindergarten teacher told me on the first day of school, there were four kids that, that claimed English as a second language. But they didn't even speak English.
Okay.
So on the first day of school, you've got a kindergarten class that has kids in class that don't speak English.
That's concerning.
It is concerning, but it's not, I mean, you can't place blame there anywhere. You've got a five or a six-year-old that doesn't speak English, hasn't learned yet. And they're in a classroom where other kids, so, so how do you get them up to speed or does that pull the class back?
Right.
So there are, everybody's included in the scores. That includes kids that might've not come to school for two weeks and now they're there on the test day. So there, there's a lot of things that drive that. And, and I understand it. I mean, I understand we're comparing to other school districts and they have some of the same issues that we do.
Yep.
But we can't continue to put the teachers in the, in the place of the parent raising kids. And having kids come to school that haven't been there for two or three weeks and expect them to be caught up in the rest of the classroom. So I have a concern about attendance.
Yeah.
I think when kids are in the classroom, they're getting educated.
Right. So we have confidence in the curriculum that we're teaching. We have confidence in our teachers that are teaching. It's just a matter of the commitment level to, to school.
Quite honestly, I was looking for that. When I'm going through these, there have been instances where the principal at the, at the school has said, go ahead and sit in the classroom for a while. I'll come back in 15 minutes.
Okay.
Don't, you know, I'm not disturbing. I'm in the back of the room. I'm watching how things happen. I've done it at the middle school level at the, at the elementary level. We've got talented committed teachers. But we don't have, they are, they are tasked with behavior in the classroom and one or two kids that consistently pull the attention away of the teacher from the rest of the class causes problems that are leading to lower test scores. So we, we do have a behavior in the classroom issue. It's probably societal.
Oh, yeah.
But we need, we need parents to take one extra step with their children's education that they're maybe not taking now. If you don't read to your kid when they're young, redo them once a month. If you're not attending parent teacher conferences, go. If you're not volunteering at the school, volunteer at the school. Take whatever it is, one more step up. That's a challenge to everybody. And if somebody were to say to me, well, what are you doing? Running for the school board. So I'm doing it and I'd ask others to do it as well.
There, there's so many things that we can unpack there. And so we'll move on to the other priorities, but, but one, did, did you want to run for the school board? Was this something that you had on your bucket list?
It wasn't. And, and when I made the decision, ultimately the first few people I told, they said, are you crazy? Why, why are you taking this on? There were questions. Are you going to continue in the legislature? And I said, as long as the voters will have me, if I'm elected to the school board.
Yeah.
And stay in the legislature and the voters continue to put me there, I'll, I'll continue to ask for their confidence. No, it wasn't my intention. With that, with that school, with that transaction, that's where I started to get involved. That, that $10 sale took a year.
Right, right. For North Hill High School.
Yes. And, and that was the first action of the school board four years ago. The new school board was to vote to accept that transaction. So here we are four years later, the bond issue, the, the three questions on the, on the ballot passed. And then we ran into some inflation issues. So in the last legislative session, I introduced a couple of bills that ultimately passed that gave some relief back to Minot and some other schools that had bond issue. That passed on the ballot in a timeframe and then ran into inflationary costs on material. So we were able to adjust for that. And through that I got pretty active. I started watching school board meetings. I started paying attention more than I did prior to that. So over the last three years, been pretty active in watching. And, and then the time came to make a decision and it looked like we weren't going to have candidates.
Yeah.
And so I made the decision to run and shortly after for, for three spots, we have seven candidates. So here we are in a contested race.
People saw you jump in, they wanted to compete.
Yeah, maybe that's the case.
No, I'm kidding.
I'm okay with that. I would rather have the competition. The voters deserve that.
Yeah, absolutely. Another thing from that best educational experience point that's interesting to unpack is the engagement because you mentioned it comes down to attendance. And this is something that, that the school is taking, matter of fact, in Minot, the city council is taking heat for this. The city's taking heat. We have the school board that's taking heat. Everybody's taking heat. The elected, everybody on the elected side is taking heat from not engaging with the citizens enough.
Yeah.
But then what we're seeing is, as you pointed out at the forum that was held in, in city hall is like, there's 50 people in this room. There's probably 50 to a hundred people watching live online right now. So we have a hundred people, 150 people out of 48,000 that are, that are engaging. Looked at that live stream today and it was up to, on YouTube is up to 400 views. And of course there was probably more of that viewed it on Facebook and stuff, but the point is that there's not a ton of views that's going on. If you look at the numbers for the school board online meetings, they're, they're very dismal. So is this a, is this, Minot has a problem? The, the city and you don't need to comment on the city, but the city doesn't engage and the school board doesn't engage with the citizens and with the parents. Is that truly the root of the problem? Or is this just people not wanting to engage on the citizen side?
I'm going to have a couple of perspectives that are unique on this. And you're right. I think I did say 50 in the room and about a hundred online. You did go back and watch it because I'm, I'm pretty certain that's exactly the number I, I assigned. A couple of ideas that maybe would increase engagement, moving the school board meetings later in the day. They're about four o'clock right now, four or four 30. If we could do that at six o'clock when people are theoretically off work.
Yeah.
We could move the meetings to the elementary schools around town instead of having them at central campus of the board office. And we could do forums. I know city of Minot has talked about that candidate. Mike Blessing has brought it up.
Right.
That's been proposed in Fargo for their city commission. We could do listening forums in those schools and then go back to our board meeting. We could open up for public input at the end of each school board meeting. We could have, one of the things that wasn't happening until recently was the agenda was not attached to the calendar. So if you subscribe to the RSS feed
Yep.
and you get a notification at this school board meeting, you still didn't get the agenda. That's being attached.
Okay.
If we do all of that stuff and we still get 10 people showing up at the board meeting, what more can you do?
Right.
Candidates can drive people based on candidacy or issues to vote and participate. But that's about the most you can do.
Right.
If we make those changes and we get the same results, that's going to be the answer to engagement is it's up to the people of Minot. Now I'm going to give some credit to those that are elected. Maybe the citizens and the residents of a community are saying, we elected you to take care of it. We've got things to do. We've got soccer games to go to. We've got to make dinner.
Yeah.
So we trust that when we elected you, you'll take care of it. The, the perspective that I think is going to be different than most candidates is going to be what I saw during the COVID year at the legislature towards the end of that session and into the next session. We would sit in the chamber and the balcony would be full of people when we were voting. Committee rooms, committee hearings would be full pre-COVID. During COVID, everything was, well, you know, I won't say off limits, but we moved to streaming.
Yeah.
We had the equipment. We had the capability. We had a budget for it. And so we moved, and so that environment, when you're sitting in it felt empty. But there were three times as many people engaged. We were getting more emails. We were getting more people watching and saying, hey, I saw the hearing. We would go to the public forums on Saturday afternoon back in Minot. The questions that we used to get were what's happening with this bill? And they would ask me if it was in my committee or someone else, and I could give an update.
Yep.
The questions changed to, I watched that hearing. What's the next step? Why did this person say what they did? The engagement increased, but it was remote.
Right.
And so I'm wondering if that's happening with school board and city council. You might not be in the room.
Right.
But they're watching.
Yeah, absolutely. I think moving the time would be a great thing. It's kind of a unique thing to have it at the 4:00 PM. All right. Moving along, your priorities, going to the next one would be budget. Now this is a big one. Obviously you've put a solution out there for this, this, and we'll find more on that after this election cycle and then into the house or when the house is in session. But what, what does Minot need to do to balance their budget?
Well, the, the, so the easy answer to that, and we have to do this at the state and we have to do it in our own homes is you don't spend money that you don't have.
Yeah.
So I'm going to equate this to depleting the checking account, which is where your, your money goes into your checking account and then you spend it. So that's where expenses come out. You've got a savings account for emergencies and we're dipping into that to pay for the expenses. And from a tax standpoint, we are about one mil shy of maxing out this, the
Okay.
School board is, is basically maxed out on their, that are levy authority. Without going to the citizens to ask for more spending authority.
Right.
So there isn't really a mechanism to increase revenue, which means you have to control expenses.
Yeah.
I think there's a handful of things that we can do and this is going to come up 86 to 87% of our budget is people. And so we have to look at things like the compensation package as a whole, not just salaries, the whole compensation package. We have a very good healthcare plan that a family, a plan, if you're, if you're a, a member, it costs about $23,000 a year. And so we've done this at the state. I think we could go out and negotiate with the insurance providers for potentially better rates. You make them compete. I don't know when that contract is up, but that's a place to look. There are some cost sharing that we should be doing with the Minot Air Force Base Board. My understanding is that a couple of years ago, they agreed to participate in, in some of the expenses at North because their kids are going to go there.
Right.
That request was denied last month for $2 million. I think the, the business manager is going to go back and ask again, but that, that the makeup of that board is different. The people that are on that board are different than the ones that committed on a handshake deal prior.
Okay.
I will heavily address TFFR, which is a teachers' fund for retirement. 24 and a half percent of salaries by law go into that fund. That's a defined benefit fund. We changed that for the public employees last session. We closed for new hires and we went to define, we went from the defined benefit to the defined contribution. And that, that fund, that purse fund is 1.9 billion in the red right now. So I, my belief over 10 years of working on this, that we have a solution to fix that. TFFR is 24 and a half percent of your salary goes into that fund. And then you have a guaranteed retirement based on your final five years of pay.
Okay.
When you retire, when you reach the rule of 85 or 90, depending on, on where you fall.
Right.
What, what Minot did last negotiating cycle was have the employer pay two of two points, two percentage points of the employee's salary towards their retirement. And another two in the second year. And mathematically, I think that's a mistake. And I've got, I understand there's people running for the board that say the employer should pay the whole amount.
Yeah.
That went from 11.75 down to 9.75, down to 7.75 of the employee, of the employee's contribution. Where that hits the employer or the employee, it is true that when they go to retire, their salary plus the employer side that was paid for the employee gets tacked on and that's their basis for retirement. So it's a wash, whether you took it in salary or you took it in retirement.
Gotcha.
Upon retirement in North Dakota, where they're hurt is their social security benefit is reduced because that's based solely on their, their income.
Okay.
So if we were to take both sides all the way down, pay it, that's 11.75 theoretically that would have gone to their salaries. And that's what they're going to lose in, in benefits from social security. So mathematically, long-term, it hurts the employee.
Gotcha.
We need to reverse that. And then, and then we, we offer a compensation package that's competitive. But we can't offer more money than what we have available.
Right.
And that's, that's just going to have to be over this next cycle. There's one other thing that I want to heavily explore and that's going to be open enrollment again. I think, and I'm, I'm pointing here, but I think when that school opens, the combination of a beautiful building in Ramstead and Minot North High School is going to drive kids to say, I think I'd like to go to school in Minot.
Yeah.
And when that happens, the per pupil payment increases from the state and it starts to, to chew into our deficit.
Yeah. Some interesting things there. We'll, we'll start with open enrollment. This is something that's come up before, why we haven't allowed it, but what do we need to do to change this? Like other, other than the votes and stuff like that, is there some key players? Is there a school faculty that's not a fan of this? Is there some major downsides that could come up because of open enrollment?
I, I'm, I'm looking into the history a little deeper on this. I think we, we closed the open enrollment and then we kind of have a tuition waiver program that, that kind of takes place of that. But, but this all kind of happened in Southeast Minot as we were, as Nedros and, and South Prairie and, and of course Bell at the time, which is in the Minot School District. But Nedros created and South Prairie created their own high school districts.
Okay.
And then we had closed open enrollment, but now it's probably time for us to, to revisit open enrollment.
Yeah. I talked with Superintendent Valmar about that too, about the, the waiver system that's in place. Do we need to shut down more schools? Is that the solution to the budget? Obviously that's a concern of maybe a small concern about for the two that have been shut down.
No, that's so interesting. And that's probably a whole topic upon itself because you, there you saw engagement.
Yeah, you did.
You have a school board meeting in a school with a topic and how people show up.
Yeah.
Those were emotional and, and I guess, you know, I, my answer is we don't need to close more schools. The timing of that coinciding with, with a opening of a new high school really did not play well in the public.
Yeah.
And the, what I saw, and I attended both of them live. What I saw was a policy from the school board saying, you can go up and speak. You can tell us what you think. You get three minutes. And then the next person speaks and we're not going to respond. And there were some outright falsehoods from, and, and maybe the people that went up to speak didn't even know.
Yeah.
They, one person said there was money stolen. That person. They, one person said there was money stolen. That person should be fired. There was no money stolen because this is a proposed deficit spending budget for next year. Nobody took the mic and said, let's clarify. Just so everybody in the room understands, this is what we're talking about. There wasn't money stolen.
Right.
Those types of things are pretty easy to address.
Yeah.
But they weren't done. Um, when you have a a classroom size of nine or ten kids and your counterpart across town has twenty three kids in their classroom, we didn't listen to what the other schools were saying. We didn't listen to the other teachers. We didn't listen to the other school districts. We only heard from those, and and there wasn't a give and take.
Yeah.
Um, my understanding is that Bell, that was a five-year plan in two thousand eight. Bring them into the Minot Public Schools with a plan over five years that that school would likely be shut down. And here we are in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty three, twenty four. Talking about that. Um, again, probably should have been better communication. There should have been a better understanding of what we're doing. There are uses for that McKinley Building. There, there are two or three that that I've been contemplating already that um what what that did was the closure of those schools allowed those teachers to transition into another school. Their jobs are guaranteed. Those kids were gonna stay with their class and go to and go to the next school together. Um, tough decisions, but ultimately the right ones, and I think Minot will benefit from it. I see no need to close any other schools in Minot.
Very good. So the last priority, or I I guess there's one after that, but we already talked about it, but um is a smooth transition to North Hill High School, Minot North.
Um, as smooth as possible, we'll say.
Yeah, as smooth as possible. What are some of the like key things? Obviously, if you made that point, you've thought about how this has to happen in order for the it to happen for there to be a smooth transition. What what are some of those key points?
Well, uh, class offerings are important. I, you know, if you have three kids their junior year that say they want to take a class their senior year, that's probably not a class that's going to be offered. If you have an advanced class where you can't find an instructor and you've got six kids, that might not be offered, but that's always been the case. That that they're doing that now. They're trying to plan for next year. They're contracting with teachers to say, here are the classes that are going to be available juniors, you know, um, register for the classes. Let let us know what you want to take. The smooth transitions are going to be, right now, we bus from Central Campus to Magic City. Central is going to be middle school. So now we've got nine through twelve at Magic City and nine through twelve at North. But if there's classes that are only offered on one campus, how are we going to get the kids, especially the ones? My my opinion is if we're going to offer it, everybody should take it. You should take the, we'll call it the shuttle bus.
Yeah.
Between campuses, potentially, I know they were meeting on it yesterday, potentially every hour, maybe every two hours, and then you try to work your schedule around that. So that transition is is, and the service alternative school is right in between the two campuses.
Okay.
So what is the bus route going to look like? And are we going to have all of the offerings? So I asked the principal of Magic City yesterday, give me three classes that you think that I don't know are being offered. And he's, the first one, he said, we're going to offer aviation one and two. My aviation pilots, you know, I'm thinking about this, and he said, we're going to teach drone flying.
Nice.
Depending on the time of day, they, if it's the first hour, they can fly at night on the football field. And I'm thinking, high school junior might be able to take aviation. Uh, they had a plumbing course that that might be available. And the other one was a dual credit psychology course where the instructor they had moved out of state and they still made it work remotely. They got dual credit for Minot High and Minot State and took a psychology class.
Wow.
So, you know, I I want to see that transition be that school opens, those kids are comfortable, it's a good environment, the culture is set. Minot or Magic City Campus, Minot High has their culture established. And then, and I said when we did the groundbreaking, and I'm going to continue to say this, you know, the iron sharpens iron or steel sharpens. I want to see gold sharp sharpen silver and silver sharpen gold and work together but compete.
Yeah.
And uh that transition to me, we're asking everybody at that new building to um to take pride in that first year, like we did, and I think it was nineteen sixty nine when we opened Magic City Campus. Um, there's still people that 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 experience, including my dad, is special to them.
Yeah.
And they hold that close. I want to see the same thing happen at North. Um, but the smooth transition includes new superintendent.
Yes, yes.
And we've got an activities director that's now running at two schools. Um, we may have instructors, a choir instructor that's working three classes at North that has to get three classes of Magic City. So those are the transitions that I want to see it to be smooth.
So the aviation, I'll I'll ask a question you might have to ask that that super or that principal. How, they're right next to the airport. Well, did are?
No, Magic City.
Oh, Magic City. Sorry, sorry. I thought you were referring to North Hill.
Well, it's a good, it's a good question because he brought it up for Magic City. I don't know if it's going to be available in North, and if it's only available in Magic City, can the North kids come and take that class? And that's part of the shuttle system that we're going to have to work out.
Yeah.
It's a good question that uh, but it did come up at Magic City.
At Magic City.
Yeah.
Thanks for clarifying that. What what has it been like working so close with, a- and this is more personal, the feels question, working so close and seeing Minot North come to life? Uh, that has to have been a very neat experience for you.
I, so going through that building when it wasn't even on the market yet. And I thought, how are we ever going to sell a twenty million dollar building in Minot?
Yeah.
And it took us, it took a while with me and and the owners to to figure out what the options and the opportunities were, and then it clicked. And you look at that building in the hundred and twenty thousand square feet, I think it was, in in that, in that capacity, thinking could thi- this feels like a small high school by today's standards. What's that going to look like if we expand it?
Right.
And and those those workrooms are now science labs and math classrooms. I could see it, but I couldn't, I mean, I could envision it, but I couldn't physically see it. Then the walls start going up on the extension or the expansion. And you can see where the pool is going to go and the gym and the music and the lunchroom and the commons and I, a- and every time I go there, I I get more and more excited because it it it's fulfilling what you could kind of see, but it's better.
Right.
Um, and but I, but I'm a magician. I wear that magician lapel pin in the legislature.
Right.
I'll probably have two.
Yeah.
Two lapel pins this next session. Um, man, that that's going to be a crown jewel of mine, not.
So the, you know, these colors, and it's a little bit dark blue, but they're looking kind of a little bit close to Duke color, so.
No, Duke is very special, man. Um, thanks for bringing that up. Um, it, thank you for actually asking about that because I went to the school board and said, I think that we should have school colors that are unique. I think they should represent the Air Force.
Mm hmm.
I think they should be, and what I said at the time, dark blue, light blue, Carolina.
Yep.
Uh, silver and a little red trim. And I remember the board thinking, well, that's too many colors. It isn't. Uh, Villanova has that. You see it on the floor at the Civic Center in Bismarck.
Okay.
Those colors work. They're Air Force related. They chose the name Sentinels, which I I I I kudos to the school board. I suggested missiles.
Yeah.
Sentinels is even better.
Right.
Uh, the the name is perfect. It ties into the Air Force bases, which is what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
Um, there's only one other school in the country that's Sentinels.
Right.
And uh, it it, that was the perfect name and the perfect colors. I like the logo. They're working on the school song.
It's exciting. It's coming together. It's coming together. So you've done something that's been crazy. You've referenced it a couple of times, and that's been going to every single school in Minot. Um, spending time with principals, spending time uh in class settings, as you've already mentioned, what have been some of the key things that you've drawn from that experience?
Yeah, uh, each school has has a unique, um, I'll I'll call it a family feel or a pride to say the people that work here love working here. Very rarely do do the, does that school loot outside of somebody that retires or or takes a transfer or moves with family. Um, the peop- the the teachers and the staff that are working at those schools seem to really enjoy it. What I found refreshing was as I toured the school and it was almost every time was with the principal. Every time a kid, especially at the elementary level, saw the principal, they just, they were smiling, hi, they would hug. Um, the teachers welcoming into the classroom. Every school gave me something unique about themselves. That's what I asked for. I wanted to hear the positives. I wanted to go and tell the public, here's the great things that are going on in school.
Yeah.
I'll give you one unique example. When I was at Jim Hill, it was the day of the eclipse.
Okay.
And I asked if I could sit in the classroom of my daughter's, in my daughter's classroom at that hour. And at that hour, it was her social studies class.
Okay.
And they were watching the NASA feed.
Okay.
I'm sitting in the back of the class going, this is, to me, this is historic, not because it's an eclipse, but the last time I watched a NASA feed in Minot Public Schools, I was a freshman in nineteen eighty six, and we were watching the space shuttle launch.
Yeah.
And I'm sitting there getting chills going, that's not on the same level.
Mm hmm.
But it's the same kind of educational experience, and I'm in the classroom again, and there's my daughter.
Right.
And I I'm watching the kids and and I'm seeing how engaged they are in the classroom. What I heard consistently though was what's holding us back in education is behavioral issues in the classroom and parent involvement uh in in many instances. We need a little bit more of that.
That's incredible. And those, obviously, we've already talked about that that issue, but time for parents to step up.
It's always time for parents to step up. One more thing.
One more thing. Um, how involved or, and this is kind of switching the line of question that we've gone over, but how involved or accessible should school board members be?
Well, uh, um, my cell phone's published everywhere. I'm going to be available on Facebook. Uh, email is easy. My email is easy to remember. It's lauser@minot.com. Uh, I've got a state email.
Lucky ones.
That goes way back to when email started, actually. Um, I'll have a a board email address, but I I think we need to be extremely accessible, but it's for the things that are board related.
Right.
Uh, I will be the first to tell the public that if you're upset that your daughter isn't first chair clarinet or you're upset that your son isn't getting enough playing time on the soccer team.
Yeah.
That's not a board issue.
Right.
Talk to the teacher, talk to the coach, talk to the activities director, talk to the principal. That isn't a board-related activity.
Yeah.
Um, but we need to be accessible, and I I believe that you can kind of see it publicly. I've responded when people have said, I don't agree with you.
Mm hmm.
And that's okay.
That's good.
There have been times I didn't agree with myself.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'll say, here's why I think what I think, and here's why I voted the way that I did. And if you're, if you're open about that, if you respond, people respect it. They may not agree with you, but they respect it.
Yeah.
And that's the best you can do.
So you mentioned loosely about, you know, if you're not first clarinet, don't reach out to the school board. What are, and I know that you brought in the actual thirty five, I think it is, points for the for a school board, but in in a summary, what do you see the role that the school board in general should play?
Well, budget, obviously, uh, approving curriculum. And we have a pretty good process for curriculum where the public gets involved if they want to. They can look at the science and social studies curriculum, which happened this spring, and approve changes based on standards that are set by the legislature and put into rule by DPI. And then we go out and find vendors and we say, here's, here's the new curriculum package. What do you think?
Yeah.
Uh, so it in e- employment, um, the school board employs a superintendent and the and the business manager and the assistants. Um, setting vision and policy and then holding hiring to fulfill that vision, letting the principals and teachers and staff do what they're hired to do within that vision, within those standards, letting them flourish and recognizing when they succeed. And every once in a while, if there's an issue that has to be human resources related.
Yeah.
That's a board function. That board has to make tough decisions. That could include disciplining. That doesn't include ratifying a one-day suspension that that is handed out by a principal based on policy. It could rise to the level of expulsion someday, which I don't ever want to see the board have to consider.
Right.
Expelling a kid means you're taking them out of a pretty good environment, hopefully.
Yeah.
And leaving them to the environment that caused them.
Right.
To behave the way they did. Um, so the the board functions as they're laid out by the century code, and you mentioned thirty five of them. Uh, set the policy and get out of the way.
Yeah. A term that's came up often in the forum was active engagement. And this relates to the school board members going out and creating those conversations. How important is that? And obviously, you've probably done that some. Um, how important is that? And um, do you feel like that's something that's currently happening now? Is this a new thing that's coming in?
Well, nationally, you see a lot of turmoil, or at least that it's sensationalized. It gets sitting, put in the media. You get somebody upset at a board meeting and
Yeah.
and and there seems to be some limited chaos. I don't see that happening much in North Dakota. Uh, as far as engagement, I I will say to the degree that I've ever wanted to interact with a board member.
Yeah.
And I'm going to take this to the school level too. Administrators, principals, teachers. I have never had an issue where I reached out to somebody and couldn't get a response.
That's good.
So I think, I I think if if somebody were to reach out, they're they're going to get, now, maybe that's not the case, but my experience has been pretty good.
Yeah.
So a- and I don't know if it's because I I might have a relationship with, you know, board member Rosted or Berryman. Um, I could go, I graduated high school Sabrina. I've been friends with Mitch forever. Mike was a teacher when I was at Minot High. Bonnie's um husband was a teacher, well, Bonnie and her husband, and Bonnie's son I coached when he was little, T-ball.
Yeah.
Like, so I think I I have a relationship where if I reached out, they feel compelled to respond. But Minot's not that big.
Mm hmm.
We can build those relationships and
Right.
I hope to be the same type.
Absolutely. So so what's your favorite sport?
Well, to play or to watch?
Um, to watch, we'll start there.
To watch and to coach is whatever my kids are doing.
Okay.
Uh, they they chose to try everything. I've got one playing hockey and basketball at the same time while her sister's figure skating and playing basketball. Cross country, track, softball, soccer. Um, well, you brought up Duke, so there you go. It's college basketball. Um, uh, but uh, you know, at this extended date in my life, it's it's, I can't even run anymore the way I like to.
Yeah.
Um, I like playing golf, but I don't get out much.
Yeah. Who who do you got in the finals?
Uh, finals for.
For NBA finals.
I'm, I'm happy to say this publicly. I don't care. I haven't watched a full NBA game in fifteen years. I am so sick of of the, it's not only where the game has gone, but all of the drama behind it. I I just, I I can spend my time better somewhere else.
Good job. I figured you're going to say the Timberwolves just because of locale, but I like your answer better than the Timberwolves.
Okay, so here, now this might cost me votes. I'm a Packer fan.
It well, hey, that makes both of us, so.
Okay.
You got support here.
All right.
So, um, we're coming to the end of this, and a question that I ask every candidate is, why, why should someone vote for you?
Well, I've got, uh, you know, what we haven't talked about is the property tax proposal. And so I've got a unique um experience and a and a unique, I think, skill set that puts me in in a position to be able to serve as a good board member. I've served as board members in different capacities. Um, whether, you know, the United Way or Minot State Alumni Association, the Hockey Boosters, those types of things I've done. This is different. This is, this is public accountability. But having, I believe, as a conservative Republican, and I want to address that as well if we can, if there's time.
There's plenty of time.
Uh, having a conservative Republican as an advocate for public schools in the legislature is important. That doesn't mean that I wouldn't support private schools. My my point here is we've got public schools. Let's make them as good as they can possibly be. Let's make that experience for those kids. Let's make that experience for those employees better this year than it was last year.
Right.
And being able to be a voice for public schools, in particular in Minot, while I'm in Bismarck and having some credibility, and I'm not on the education committee, and I'm not going to ask to be.
Mm hmm.
I'm chairing the industry, business and labor committee, and that's where I want to be.
Yeah.
Um, so I think the combination of that, a history, you can see what I've done in the past. I think people can see my passion for this community. I was promoting Minot just as a, like the the um, what I learned in school today, I was doing, look at all the cool things in Minot in the summer, last summer, before I was ever a candidate.
Yeah.
I love this community.
Right.
I left and came back because I wanted to be here.
Yeah.
And tha- that's part of what I do as a career. So I I think I've got um unique experiences, skill set, and it goes back to my kids too. I want the best for my kids and their friends and their classmates. The best e- education experience possible.
So you brought it up, you're you're, this is a nonpartisan position, but obviously you are. Well, everybody probably is voting either Democrat or Republican, right? Everybody always has personal feelings, but you're you're in a very public setting uh, being in the state legislature. Does, should that play any effect? Uh, being in the state legislature. Does should that play any effect into how someone views?
Yeah, I think it does. And and now again, looking at my records, so three sessions ago, I introduced a bill that would require local candidates, whether it was park board, school board, city council, to declare a party on the ballot. I didn't say you must declare Republican or Democrat. It was any party. So on the ballot next to your name would be the party that you
Yeah.
You claimed. Um, that got defeated and it got and and I remember the day I introduced the bill in my committee. So generally, not generally, oftentimes what happens in the legislature, the prime sponsor introduces the bill. Takes the questions, defends their position, and then leaves the room to go back to their committee.
Okay.
In this case, I did that and and it was in my committee, so I went from the podium to my seat.
Yeah.
As I was leaving, I said before, before I sit down, committee.
Yep.
Um, the people here that are opposing the bill are likely gonna say one of two things. They're either gonna say in their groups, they oppose this idea because if their candidates have to declare a party in order to get elected, they'll declare the other party in their area.
Okay.
Or they're gonna say I I I won't identify with my party in order to get elected. So it's one of two things. Both of them are bad. Both of them are not transparent to the voters.
Yeah.
And I went and sat down and the first lobbyist that got up did exactly what I just said was gonna happen. And I thought, this is so obvious. And uh, and then the the House voted it down. The next session, I introduced the same bill and I made it optional.
Yeah.
Same process happened. What is what is not allowed in North Dakota is the party affiliation on the ballot. We can take endorsements, we can say who we are, and I've done that.
Yep.
And I've had people say, I won't vote for you because you're Republican, which I find ironic because what they're saying is I will only vote for the Democrat, except who's that?
Yeah, right.
And so I've asked voters to say, to ask the candidates, what what party, if any, are you?
Yeah.
And uh, we're we're human. I mean, it's okay to say you're independent.
Right.
It's okay to say I'm a fiscal conservative and a social liberal. You don't have to say established party. But give something. Something that would would indicate how you're gonna be serving the public.
Right.
Um, I'm not gonna hide behind the fact I'm a Republican. Uh, people know it. Some don't like it, some do.
Yeah.
But at least they know.
At least they know. Yeah, no, it that's it's an interesting thing because you can say it's nonpartisan all you want, but politics still what someone believes and all that still definitely plays a huge factor.
I'll challenge the people mine out. When you drive around and see yard signs, you're gonna see clusters.
Yeah.
So what does that tell you? There are some yard sign, some people displaying yard signs that don't have mine.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, you they you can kind of tell.
Right.
So why don't we just tell the public?
Yeah, well, I and I was looking at some of the forums that were putting on by just independent people putting get to know your candidates. And you're like, okay, wait, this one's there, this one's there, and this one's there, and I know what they believe. So you know, you know, they're all campaigning together, just like you do for the the legislative cycles and stuff like that, where you're on a ticket together.
Yeah, and and yeah, and we have a candidate in the school board that's a federal employee and based on the Hatch Act, can't.
Can't, yeah.
And so that I understand that. He he said that in the forum.
Right, yeah. And so then that makes it where if it's optional, then it allows him space to be able to
Yep.
Still engage. Very interesting. Yeah, you've brought up the uh, the tax. We might have to do a whole podcast just on the tax proposal that you have coming out.
Well, uh, so it's rare, it's rare that a legislator has a bill draft prepared a year in advance.
Yeah.
Um, when I brought that up at the press conference, you were there.
Right.
And uh, talked about that idea and I I think as everybody knows, there's a constitutional amendment um, being petitioned right now that to eliminate property tax. There you could have your one hour podcast.
Yeah.
The deadline for those signatures, I believe, is the first week of July. They get, you know, one year to collect those signatures. I think their target is forty thousand signatures. If they hit that, they'll likely make the ballot.
Yeah. You you think you think if that gets on ballot, it passes? Maybe you can't comment.
No, I'll comment. I my my prognostication on that is what happens if it gets on the ballot? And they get their signatures approved, let's say mid-July.
Yep.
And the elections in November.
Yeah.
You're gonna have four intense months, up to five intense months of vote yes or vote no.
Right.
Campaign.
Yeah.
I think there's gonna be a heavy vote no campaign funded.
Okay.
I don't think there's gonna be a heavy vote yes campaign funded.
Okay.
That sways elections.
Yeah.
On issues and candidates. My sense is it's close and it fails.
Yeah.
If that's the case, if it fails, I'll introduce the bill that we had talked about that has three parts to it.
Yep.
The state mandates that the local political sub, the school boards levy sixty mils against your value and for property tax for education. That money gets circle circulated and sent back to the school district in a per pupil payment decided by the legislature. My bill has the state legislature, the state government buying out, not buying down, but buying out the remaining sixty mils. Which in Minot reduces the education portion of your property taxes by forty three percent. Part two of that bill caps the local political subdivisions at a three percent cash growth rate per year. So you couldn't have the park board say, hey, my not, your taxes just went down by overall by twenty five percent. We're gonna increase them by ten.
Okay.
They're capped. Um, city council's talking about a a zero increase budget. So things like that, I think I think are a good trade off, but we can't, the legislature has made the mistake in the past of buying down and then not controlling the increase on the backside.
I see.
So the sixty mil is a buyout. The control is limited increase on the balance. Then the controversy comes in part three, where I'm suggesting that the private school, if they go through the training at DPI by March of twenty twenty six, and then the private school makes the decision by ju- by June of twenty twenty six to enroll in public funding for private schools in the amount of eighty percent of the per pupil payment. If they follow the enrollment requirements, the admission requirements and the reporting requirements that the public schools have.
Yeah.
I chose eighty percent because to me that leaves that curriculum decision of their board to allow for education or um, uh, religion.
Yep.
That amount of eighty percent of the per pupil payment is a is pushing nine thousand dollars per student. Last session, we had a bill that ultimately we settled at fifteen hundred dollars per pupil. The governor vetoed it. The Senate overrode the veto, the House sustained, so we it it didn't pass. I spoke against that bill twice and I said, I will come up with an idea. This idea is substantially more money, but it requires accountability and it leaves it up to the school, the private school
Yeah.
To decide if they want to opt in or not.
Right, yeah. It very interesting. I I think the eighty percent is very interesting and allowing the private school the opportunity, but also leaving them room for the religion and stuff like that. Sounds like a very solid bill.
Without the private schools, that bill alone is every two years about six hundred and seventy five million dollars. That's new spending at the state. So even that bill without the privates, which should be another seventy million, seventy, seventy five million maxed out. Even without them coming into the legislature, that is essentially a spending proposal. That's a conservative Republican bringing a bill. It's spending, but to me, that is a valid use of legacy fund because it's both education and tax relief and it applies to everybody.
Yeah.
So, you know, that 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 alone is a heavy lift.
Yeah.
Six hundred million dollar bill.
I can't afford it. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a lot of money for sure. That'll affect budgets. So I think you said you were gonna have to introduce it early in the cycle so that we had a chance to play out.
Well, I'm talking to people around the state. I'm talking to key legislators, uh, leadership in both chambers. My vision of that as as a legislator is if that has legs, get it out of the House quickly, get it over to the Senate. And then that becomes the the keystone bill and whatever's left in the budget, we can work from. I don't want that to wait until the end and then have the sixty mils cut down to thirty and say, well, we'll do it later.
Right, right.
That's where we failed in the past.
Yeah, have you been aggravated about in the past how this has come up? It's obviously not the first time property taxes come up. And it seems like there's been no progress on it. And now we have this constitutional amendment that might radically affect things.
Yeah, I mean, but there there has been progress. There's been, um, we've taken over mills, we've we
Yeah.
But what's happened, I mean, we've spent a lot of money at the state, but the property tax bill that the property owner continues to go up.
Yeah.
And I'm saying that as real estate broker. I've got investments that I want to see lower taxes.
Right.
Um, there are other proposals. I want this one debated early out in front. I don't want the League of Cities or Association of Counties coming in. Um, second week of January and saying vote no. I want this vetted in the public.
Yeah.
So that we have something that we can really work with. And maybe it changes when we get to December. I don't think it's gonna change much, but I want to hear the input of the public, including those constituent groups. I want to hear it in twenty twenty four so that we have a good product in twenty five.
Have you, you've mentioned that you've talked with some uh, legislators around the state or do you feel like you're gaining support?
What I did was make a courtesy call and send the email of the draft legislation to about fifteen House and Senate members before that press conference.
Okay.
I didn't want, um, I didn't want somebody that's in a key position, whether they're on appropriations or leadership or education or political subs or finance and tax to to learn about it in the media.
Right.
So that was my initial, uh, and so now now the school board campaign is taking my time.
Yep.
Come June, uh, we'll know if that initiative has has legs and we'll know the results of the election. This summer, I anticipate getting more of those answers that you just asked. I think I'm just putting people on on hold right now
Yep.
To see where things go.
Makes sense, makes sense. Well, we'll look forward to see what the results are from your school board campaign. Um, we'll be hosting a primary day live deal, so we might have to check in with you or something. Uh, make sure you're doing all right as the votes get tallied, so.
Well, uh, thanks for bringing that up too, because we we have vote centers in Ward County. And so there's two places in my not to vote and there's gonna be, I think, five in the smaller communities. But the opportunity for that is to get those results when the polls close to get them a little quicker.
Okay.
So you've witnessed, well, we we can't provide the results because we don't have them from from this.
Yeah.
Uh, hopefully that's alleviated. Hopefully we know a couple hours after the polls close where, you know, where things stand.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's a stressful night. I mean, you put in, whether it's legislature, school board, people are volunteering and putting a lot of time in. My opponents are working hard.
Right.
You want answers that night.
Yeah.
But it's stressful.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Well, is there anything we didn't cover that you wanna include in there? We we've covered, we've covered a lot. It's been effective hour.
Yeah, it has been an hour already?
Yeah. Hour seven.
Went went quick. No, I, you know, I I think that that a combination of uh, the budget, taxes, curriculum, educational experience, safety, we didn't cover that. We didn't cover a little bit of technology. I have, um, you know, we've got
Okay, so I'm gonna interrupt you. Whenever I bring up technology to to somebody that it seems like they always like dodge that question. They don't love that question. And so what needs to hap- are we effectively using technology and integrating technology? What's your view on tech- technology?
Uh, it depends on, yeah, we're using it very effectively. I mean, we've got the opportunity or the ability with a curriculum. Now, when we look at textbooks, what's the supplemental use if we have to go remote in in the event something? E- even if a kid is sick, you know, are they able to to turn in their homework or um, limited things like parent square where we're communicating from the school to the parent now on that app is this year is fantastic. It used to be that the parents were either the teachers would email and it was sitting at night and one on one. The apps that we're using now are good. I was doing a a presentation in a classroom and I asked the question, these are freshmen and sophomores. What's the cell phone policy? I know what it is at the school, but what do you as the teacher allow for in the classroom? And the teacher said, we don't have our cell phones on. So as I'm speaking, somebody's alarm went off on their phone, so it was on. They weren't texting or anything, but it was on. They did, I was there talking about finance and not putting yourself in credit card debt and things that kids should know.
Yeah.
And that happened and they didn't know I was a board candidate.
Okay.
And I said, you know, and they, all the kids were making eye contact. They put their phone down. They were embarrassed. And I said, I appreciate that you shut your phone off and you're paying attention. Little do you know, I might be in a position one day as a school board member to say, no phones in school.
Yeah.
And the way you handled it was mature.
Right.
And you could just see these kids going from, oh, I'm in trouble to wow. Um, smart boards in the classroom, artificial intelligence. You know, what if we have the capability or the students do, if they have to write a paper or read a book and have AI do their homework? But we also have the ability to detect if AI did the homework.
Yeah, right, right.
So we need to know, we need to be a step ahead
Yep.
Um, with technology. I like what we've embraced in mine of public. I think that the um, that what's happening at the state level, whether it's at DPI or N D C L or the School Board Association is keeping pace with technology. State government can't do that as quickly. School boards can. I trust that that the teachers are trained well and they're implementing what they see fit in the classroom and then communicating with parents as they as they need to. And that app that I mentioned, whether it's Power School or Parent Square really improves communication and it's easy.
Very good, very good.
I'm not gonna dodge a technology question. I think it's important. We it's here.
It's, we gotta embrace it. But and some of them are, well, you know, it's I basically, we don't hear any complaints about it, so it must be all right. But I think that's a scary answer because technology moves so fast that if, you know, if you're not in the AI game right now, you're you're missing stuff. Because chat GPT can write, you know, and anything you needed to write and it's so accessible now.
Yeah.
So and that's just one drop in the bucket. That's not even a big thing.
You get a premium version for twenty bucks a month and you have a parent that does it and the kid uses it and, you know, I, so I don't have my kids. They have phones. I don't let them take them to school.
Yeah.
But if my daughter needs something, she'll go to the office and call and say, hey, I've got choir practice or not, I've got orchestra practice or um, we don't have track this afternoon. Can you come and get me at three thirty instead of five? Like, if I need to be contacted, the school has always been, uh, has always facilitated that with my kids. If one of them's sick, the nurse will call. They don't, I haven't had to have their phones in school.
Yeah.
Uh, and the school recognizes that. So, you know, but yeah, we we have to not only embrace the technology but we have to educate our kids that maybe go into that industry. And the aviation class is is a great example.
Yep.
I don't know how to fly a drone and I can't in my industry without a license.
Right.
I can't go up and video somebody's house.
Right.
Without a license and recognizing the people next door, I'm videoing their house as well.
Yeah.
Um, wouldn't it be cool if my daughter, who's a freshman, could operate, when she's a freshman, could operate a drone and then do work for me?
Right, absolutely.
So there's
Real life experience.
Yeah, yep.
Very.
We have to embrace it and and not just use technology, but embrace teaching it.
If someone wants to support you in your candidacy, how how should they do that?
Well, the first thing is vote. That's coming up quick. Um, I want the engagement. Everything I do is lauser for Minot. So hashtag lauser for Minot. Lauser for Minot dot com. There's, if if you're talking donations, you could make a donation there. Social media, it's Facebook slash it's lauser for Minot. Um, that that's really the engagement, getting some, maybe some more yard signs out, but if the support is tell five friends, get them to the polls and vote for Scott.
There we go. And primary day is coming up June eleventh and it's a big day. I think it gets overlooked because primary day, you know, like it's very important, just voting for the candidates that you want to see in your party. But but beyond that, there's actually elections that are going on that day. Might not be voting for president, but we're voting for school board.
Yeah. So I'm obviously focused on school board, but I'm very, very involved in other elections as well. I've got friends running for other offices. I think the turnout is gonna be close to ten thousand in Minot. That's rare for a primary. But we've got a highly, um, highly charged and expensive race for governor in Congressman Armstrong against Lieutenant Governor Miller.
Yep.
That's gonna drive uh, people to vote. We've got a very contentious race for the nomination for for Congress to replace Congressman Armstrong. I was out in DC with Kelly two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Um, so we've got the Becker Fedorcheck um, and others race. I I think it's really probably coming down to those two. I think it's gonna be a razor thin margin. Uh, so you don't normally have that. And the other, and so you have to vote party line on those races.
Yep.
The other thing that's interesting is there's two candidates running for the Democrat ticket. And so you can't
It's good.
You can't spoil 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 your ballot and vote in the House race on the Democrat side and that. You can't spoil, spoil, spoil your ballot and vote in the house race on the Democrat side in the. In the uh, governor's race in the Republican side, that spoils, spoils your ballot. I think that race is gonna drive turnout. And then of course, there's city council, there's a number of candidates, seven, six or seven. Seven candidates for three positions on council, seven candidates for three positions on school board. And oddly, not enough candidates for county commission, but now we have people riding in. So I think it's gonna be a high turnout election and, and that's, that's a bit, excuse me, that's a better measure of what the citizens want.
Absolutely, yeah, well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be great. We're looking forward to it. Uh, any endorsements you want to make?
Endorsements I want to make? I will, um, I, you know, I've, I've been, I've been, uh, I, I told um, Dr. Becker. Early on, I would support him, that's been public. He's, he, in my career in the legislature, he and a couple others have, have become lifelong friends. Some of the favorite people I've ever served with. I've known Julie and her family a long time. And to Julie's credit, she's called and asked. Would you, and I, I, you know, I said, I, I made that endorsement early and I'm not gonna switch. I, I also, um, I'm a precinct or a district captain for um, Armstrong. And I think he's gonna make a fantastic governor. I've got a number of friends running in the school board. Uh, I'll say with me or against me. So I'll stay out of that one.
Yeah, that's fair.
But I, I think people know um, generally who I've been working with on, on that race and uh, and I've got. More friends than positions available for city council.
Yeah, city council is gonna be an interesting one. What about for something that involves the school board, the DPI?
So DPI, as you know, is not a political race. I think that the superintendent has, is taking blame publicly for test scores that. Again, isn't in the century code and in the constitution is not her role. So I, she's, she's gonna win that race, I think. She's gonna be heavily funded. She, she is working hard. I actually got a message from her today asking. You know, she's asking me how my race is going. And she said, I, I just finished watching another school board forum. I'm moving on to watch the Minot one this weekend. She initiated that. I think she's more engaged than, than um, she might be getting credit for, but those statewide races are tough.
Yeah, they are, they are. Very interesting. Well, June eleventh, we'll see how a lot of it plays out. Obviously, there'll be some. Other stuff that'll be taken care of in November too. But, all right, well, thank you for joining us today.
Thanks for having me.
Absolutely. This has been another edition of Minot Matters. You have the DecoDun brought to you by Shock Saffin Lock. I'm Jonathan Starr. Be sure to go to. Be sure to watch every episode of Minot Matters as we continue to cover the election cycle this year. Uh, like and subscribe on YouTube, follow us on Facebook, become part of the DecoDun community. Thank you for watching this video. Have a great day.